Order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment? Consent items?
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion items. We'll need Crin to address this.
Do I? Ian, do you have an updated hard copy of the agenda? Because what I have here is not what I'm seeing there. So...
This matches.
There are a few names that did not come through on this one.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Yep.
That's okay. That's all right. I've got it online here.
So this is current time. Here we had a Kelly and Marcia.
Okay. Well, you must have it. Where did you pick up yours, Kathy? Is it on the side?
Yep, but mine isn't. I'm missing Kelly and Marcia.
Yeah, that's what I...
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know how that happened. I thought I was careful about that.
Okay.
I think she was meeting with an Esco person, please.
We're waiting for you for the first discussion item. We're already...
You're already going, "Okay." Okay. Did the guys, did you talk yet?
They didn't speak at all.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, would... If we could have the trap shooting, people would like to give an update. Is that... Would you entertain that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm John Hems and Janet Walters, coaches for the trap team. We just wanted to come back quick and kind of give you a quick update as to how the spring season went for us. We had 15 students sign up for the league team. Ultimately, several kids were also in other activities, golf, track, and such. So we probably had 10 kids that were very active, meaning they came to pretty much every practice and every event. We had probably five kids that bounced between activities, depending on how scheduling went. Most of the kids were young. I don't have the breakdown of ages, but we had a number of junior high kids and high school kids. We only had one senior graduate this year. So we have all those kids coming back and more kids that are going to be interested, I think, those seventh graders. We had ultimately four kids go to the open tournament that the league puts on. There's two tournaments. There's one that's sponsored by the Minnesota High School Athletic Association. It's a volunteer or invite-only. You have to do as a team and as an individual participant at a certain level to get invited, and that's a pretty small group out of 10,200 or 10,300 kids that participated this year in the state of Minnesota. But then the league itself has an open tournament, and it was in June, which we had four kids go up and participate in that up in Alexandria. And that was one day. They went up and did their thing. The overall tournament was eight days. About 8,000 kids participated in that overall. Back to us locally, we shot, used the La Crescent trap range. They have two trap ranges, lights. It's early enough in the spring. You need lights because you're shooting in the dark. Plus, they have a nice facility for parents to sit when it's chilly out. They were happy with that, happy with our kids. They want us to say we can come back next spring if we want to. They were quite pleased. From a financial standpoint, through local donations, through businesses and entities and other... Mike Timples today? Or the Somerville Club or Somerville Group and stuff donated money to help us do this. We offset so that there was nine days of competition, in essence. Donors covered the cost for all the kids for six of the nine days of activity. So it dramatically reduced, I think, the cost to the families, to the family here, and really made it, I think, economical for the kids. We're going to attempt to do something similar going in the next spring, try to get some more sponsors and donations to help offset that cost. The exact numbers will depend on the number of donations we get for and stuff, but that I'm going to kind of back into helping these kids participate. So everybody got better. We probably, I think, we ended up seventh out of nine teams that are in our little conference, but again, you're talking 10,000 kids. So we weren't last, but every kid got better and every kid, I think, had fun doing it. So overall, we thought it was pretty successful in that sense. So I didn't hear anything. We didn't hear anything particularly negative from parents and general. I felt like everybody was pretty happy. So I'm curious to hear if the board has heard anything or any comments about how the season went or anything like that. I guess we're here too to listen to what maybe you guys have to say as well.
Personally, I haven't. Does anyone else?
Only good things.
Our plan is to try to go back and offer again next spring and move forward in that way.
Is it just a spring thing then?
Yeah, they do have a fall league that's less, that's fewer weeks. It doesn't have the big tournament. We considered it, but we thought that the cost of the spring league is such that it would be tough to do the fall league. Plus, you have more kids in football. We have coaches. Harder to be volunteers.
Busy time.
Busy time of year. And right now, we think the spring worked the best and try to stay with that. We'll still try to give some of those kids opportunities to do some more trap shooting on an individual basis through, you know, through the sportsman's club, let's say, something like that, but not a formal, a formal team in the fall right now.
Great. Well, thank you for all the time and work you've put into this. We appreciate it.
Very happy to do that.
Have you, are you in communication with Lisa Shuddy or with Todd or Crin or who at the school?
Typically, I'm reaching out to Lisa typically, give her the list of who signs up, are the eligibility issues. Are we okay with that? And try to stay in touch with her kind of throughout the season is how we did that. Her son also competed, so they were involved with some of those emails as well in terms of communication, so.
And then, Crin, when would this come up again? Because we had, did we do this on an ongoing basis when we approved it? Was it on a trial?
And that's why when John and I saw each other and he said, "Can you come in?" And I said, "Well, that actually fits because it was one of those, you approved it as a board as far as we'll see how it goes this year." And so...
So I don't know when it's going to come before the board again. That's what I guess my question is.
Right. And so now that we've got this discussion item, we can put it on for old business, the time to approve that that trap shooting goes on again this year.
How many kids did you have?
Fifteen. Fifteen.
And most of those would be, would you think they were in more in upper grades or seventh and eighth?
The majority were seventh and eighth. First-time shooters and they've come all improving and I think that's...
Anything you guys, anything you can do different to improve or...
Pardon me?
Anything you guys can do different or anything you...
It's just a matter of getting some time in and give them opportunity, help them pull together. And some of that, some of the financial support also lends to additional funds to give them more, I guess, practice opportunities per se as well. Take their own money and go shoot somewhere else.
And is the firearm safety certificate required?
Correct. And that, there were no incidents. There were no even near misses. The kids, I thought, and did very well with picking up what they're supposed to do and how they're supposed to do it. I know the league is looking at it. I need to follow up and see if that's a change. But the league is looking at doing some online safety training for the kids to meet the specific rules relative to trap shooting. So in other words, hunter education and gun safety is important, but it's, it's safety over here and then we have safety over here relative to trap. Same basic principles, but they're going to try to tailor it more towards the trap setting in terms of how they're supposed to behave and what they do, how they manage their firearms and stuff relative to the trap house, let's say, and the facility. That was a discussion at the coaches' meeting in spring. I haven't seen any emails on that change yet, but that was one thing they were talking about, adding another layer of safety requirements.
And most of the kids have their own guns?
Yep. However, a number of them would borrow coaches'. Yeah, some didn't fit them well, so... So we did some things like that. Better suited gun for them. Yeah. I was encouraged to see how responsible the kids were. Very, very, very.
I was also amazed to see how responsible the kids were and how safe the conditions were there and how seriously the kids took it. And the communication from the coaches was phenomenal. We would get emails saying, "This is when practice is going to be." Got a weather report most of the time too, as far as how the kids should dress. Refreshing to see communication.
We had about 10 volunteers that were there, so if you have 15 kids, there were almost as many volunteers as there were kids in terms of they're out on the range, available to look for, pay attention to. And some of those individuals, only responsibility was safety, so they weren't being distracted by coaching a kid or interacting. Their job was to make sure things are done correctly. Everything's been pointed in a safe direction that they're handling and following.
Say, what kind of guns do you use? I'm not exactly a gun person. I don't know.
Twelve and twenty eight shotguns.
Oh.
Mostly, or most of the kids had twelve, maybe some had twenty. And a lot of them had never shot a shotgun at a flying target with BBs. In other words, well, a lot of deer hunters, plenty of deer hunters in the county, but it was interesting on how many kids had never done trap and how well they did by the end of the season in terms of going from maybe breaking two, two trap, two clay targets out of 25 to getting 12, 15, 20. Some kids, not nobody shot a 25, which would be perfect, but they, some kids getting really close, so very fun.
Well, a long time ago, some guys took me out and let me try it out, and I think out of 50 of them, I shot, I hit exactly none. I decided it wasn't my sport.
They even did better than that.
We had three girls on the team, so that was pretty nice too. And we're looking for more that would like to try it or participate, so.
My niece used to. She went over in Wisconsin.
And I think they're a lot of fun. The team was very supportive of each other. That's one thing I think I took out of it too. They were very, very supportive of each other, positive and helpful. And when they weren't doing really well, the other kids were very supportive. So that was really, that was nice. They might have had a poor score, but they still had a smile on their face and a laugh on their face. It was fun.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay.
That was a good report.
Yes. I figured you needed to hear it. Okay. Next up, we have the contracted services. I got the breakdown from Pete as far as what our service agreement includes at Ascentech and what it does not include. And then we've got the dependable solutions proposal. And what I was thinking was the full support, which is the, it works out to, I think, about 65,000 a year. It could be less than that, depending on how much we need. But what I like about this one, other than the other tech support firms that I've seen, the other one, I had a meeting with another, is it CSS? And they do almost all of it virtually. If they had to come on site, they charged extra. This one is already those 16 hours per week for the mid-level technician that is onsite. It's boots on the ground here, and I like that aspect. The other thing, we might need that senior engineer to do some things because, as you'll notice on the Ascentech list, the Cisco switches are not maintained by Ascentech, just the brocades. And I did ask what the heck the difference was between a brocade and a Cisco switch, and I did not get a response. So right now, I will just have to plead ignorance that there's, there's a difference. And I did ask if we would be better off switching those Cisco switches to a brocade that is maintained by Ascentech. And I think Chris Hoyland is on vacation, so I haven't gotten that response yet as far as whether we should get rid of our Cisco switches or keep them and have...
So if they have a problem, what's the turnaround time? If you have a problem today, right now at 6 o'clock, what's their turnaround time of them guys getting back to you? Do they guarantee a turnaround time at all?
Yeah, they said one hour.
One hour? Guaranteed?
And I have talked to, I didn't call any of the schools that are using them because it's summer hours and I'm not getting a lot of responses. But there is business in Winona that uses them, and they said that they are incredibly happy with the service they provide. And they went through several different firms before they phoned this one.
Where are they at? In La Crosse?
La Crosse and... Yeah. It's over in Wisconsin. They do work with Abel right down the street here. So it would be very easy if they've got a technician at Abel and we have an emergency and the tech isn't here at that point, they'll just...
So this is, it's 55,000 with this, right?
Sixty-five. It's, the full support is an hourly thing.
Right.
But it's sixty-five is just so we can budget that.
Is there another comparable one to this or wouldn't you compare this to anything?
The same 20 hours a week from CSS was going to be 80,000 because it was, for every 10 hours, it was 40,000.
So it's how they block it out, their time rate?
But this one is the 16 hours onsite, whereas CSS was mostly virtual. And I just, with morale, I need to make sure that the teachers see that there is somebody here that's willing to and able to help them. And I know that the support we're getting from Ascentech really has helped us out and they have filled in a gap, but they are also really swamped. And so we've got, like in MNBA, there's a printer that, that we've got sitting there that hasn't been connected yet.
So what would Ascentech, what would they charge to do the same thing?
Ascentech will not do it. Right now, they're, they're basically, they're helping us out, but they don't have the manpower to do it anymore. So that's why they're really hoping that we either hire or get another firm.
So what I think also we need to look at is before the school year starts, or they should see, come in and do an evaluation. Have they done an evaluation of what we currently have?
We've got Ace, Ascentech did that whole thing as far as this is what we have, this is what we need.
They give you a list of items you need and replacements and all that?
Yes.
And how much was that, you know?
That was part of that, part of those hours. And we had, we had a lot of that, we had a lot of that, a lot of that done already too.
Okay. Was there any capital things, like servers or anything like that? Maybe, I mean, do they recommend replacing any of that in the future or...
As far as those Cisco switches, that's what I was asking about.
Okay.
The Ciscos, I think the brocade switches were the upgrade that you put in last summer.
Right.
And they were replacing Cisco switches.
Yep.
And they're more solid, but they're, they're expensive.
Yeah.
So, and then servers, most of our servers are off site.
The servers are, right, the servers are all maintained by Ascentech.
The biggest worry they have now, there's cyber, we call it spyware or whatever.
Security.
Security coming in to get, yeah. That's huge. Do we make, do we, are we insured? Do we have coverage?
We talked about that last week.
Yes. We talked about, and it's, Ascentech, since they've got actual servers and storage for them, Ace is, is in, basically part of their service is maintaining those servers as far as the security for them as well. And that's one of the things that this also provides is another layer of security for us.
Do we train our employees on any of that? Not what not to open and what not to do?
I will be honest, we haven't done a good job with that. We need to.
Our company almost got taken down here a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, really?
It's coming to everybody. I mean, at MSBA last January, I went, the early bird session was entirely on that, and there were sessions.
And just because somebody, it looked like a regular email that you would get from...
Promotion horse. You open it up and it just takes you down.
I mean, it's real.
Oh, yeah. It's part of our required annual training. Every year, got to do it again.
Yep.
That may be something you want to look at too.
Right.
On the two options that are offered here, the 78, the option one and then option two, the main thing, or one of the things that I noticed that was different is that the full, full proactive support at 78K per year says the resources required, or I don't know what they mean by resources required, that they would provide 24/7 remote monitoring and problem resolution. And the 65,000K one does not include the 24/7 remote monitoring. So that seems to me like every time we have a situation where somebody has to remote in or has to come, that it's going to be money on top of this.
Would that be like if we had a thunderstorm in the middle of the night and shot our power out, they would know that, get in some sort of a notice and our system would be up and running by the time they come to work the next day?
Well, that can't, you can't always ensure that.
I don't know. I'm just asking.
But the difference is that this one is a flat fee and the other one is more hourly. So if we don't need the number of hours, I would...
Well, this is...
It says approximately, working approximately 16 hours per week. And that, so that's, it's a monthly cost. Right. It's, and the full support, usually they come under what that is.
So when you go to this, Crin, it says communication skills. What are they going to be doing for that?
The communication skills, if talking to people, they're not going to talk just techie gibberish so that, so the teachers will understand what they're saying. And that, that's communication skills with a tech person is really imperative because sometimes people say it's doing this, this chika, chika, chika noise. And they have to have the communication skills to deal with those of us who are not as tech-minded.
What do they mean by project management?
What they would really like to do is be part of a tech team that's at a tech core group so that we can start being proactive and planning for the future. Looking at what is really, what the goals are, where we need to be, really looking at what should be on the next horizon instead of constantly just fixing what we have. It's, let's be proactive. That's one of the things that they also are very strong about with the school. If you're just maintaining what you have, you're, you're not maintaining, you're actually falling behind.
I'm sure they sell the hardware, so...
They don't.
They don't?
They don't. And they said that if they were thinking about if they got into it, they, it would look like a conflict of interest, and they don't want to be salesmen. They want to really be solutions. And so they, they do not sell any hardware.
I, the, so besides choosing which of these, we are perhaps going to go with the top 10 recommendations, the sheet of top 10 recommendations where it alludes to the tech committee and the proactive and the planning. So how are you going to go about presenting us with what that is going to look like? Because we don't, like, will the board be involved? Is it a district level discussion? How, how is that going to happen?
I would like that to be a district level discussion, but it's, it's going to be more for, because this is a, this is a dependable solution for the onsite. So it's going to have to include the onsite administration. It's going to have to include the onsite media teachers. It's going to have to include those people that are intricately working with the technology. And so in my mind, I kind of see, but then it also, I think it would require someone from the board to be on that committee as well. But the board might not agree with me.
Number three, what does that mean? Review all the documentation in terms of that?
Oh. The devices we have, the year in which they were purchased, the upgrades that have gone to them, if there's some security issues to get in as far as all the, basically that, all the documentation. So if somebody, if we have somebody new coming in, we've got all the documentation there. So we know, here's the device. This is when it was last upgraded. Here's the password to get in so you can upgrade it. But then that's got to be maintained in a very secure fashion so no one else can just, we're not going to hand passwords out to people, but we do have to have it all documented so we can, we can maintain the equipment that we have, get into computers and update what needs to be updated.
Well, at MSBA meetings and in discussion, just a recent one with area superintendent, there are a lot of school districts that one of the board committees is a technology, is a representative from the board on a technology committee, but I don't know what those technology committees look like. So I don't know if it needs to be a board committee or if we need board representation on it, like...
I would see it like QCOM, where it's not a board committee, but there's board representation on it. Is that, and I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 that's fine. I mean, just, I just, I think that's been long overdue. I've, and it's hard to, with as busy as everybody is, to get a committee up and going and have a point person that keeps it rolling. So that's not going to be a board person, but I think it's important as we move into this and with the risks and security things, it needs to be.
But I would like the point person to be an in-house employee. So I would, I would like it to be, and I haven't talked to Becky about this, but I would like it to be Becky as our tech integrationist because she could be the point person that is looking really at the tech and integrating all of it together through the sites. because she could be the point person that is looking really at the tech and integrating all of it together through the sites.
So what's the next move on this? We're just sort of getting the options here.
Well, and it's, um, we could still have that position posted and just keep it out there, but, um, it, it's kind of like, I'm not sure if the board has a, does the board need to, to move to approve?
I think we would because we're entering a contract with a company.
It's, it's, um, it's not a binding contract like, um, it's not a binding contract like Tahoe. It's.
So you can get out of it within ninety days, something like that?
Thirty days, yeah. You can go month by month. That's why it's, it's not like Tahoe where you're locked in for a year.
So do we even need to approve it then?
Well, see, that's why I, I brought, I'm not sure that we would.
Well, you basically eliminated the position, so you almost have to stop that, right? Let's say we're going this other way.
Well, we haven't really gotten, the only reason I'm looking at this is because we really haven't gotten anyone that has applied for that position that can hit the ground running. And we have no one that can train that person. And the, the people that have been applying haven't had any experiences in schools. If we had somebody that applied that really had experiences being IT in a school, it would be a different story. Because it is, it, being IT in a school is a very different beast than being an IT elsewhere. Cause you're dealing with a lot of different systems.
Well, I like the, the option or the inclusion of access to a senior engineer. That, that I think would be really helpful at certain times.
I still don't, I guess I don't understand. So there's an agreement page. The last page on here is a summary and then uh, confirmation of the understanding of the terms and objectives. But I guess I don't quite understand that the terms are on demand or monthly. On the full support sixty-five K per year option, the final paragraph states, this option is based on expected costs. You are billed on an hourly basis one time per month. So that implies monthly. Um, we feel sixty-five K is a good budget item. It's going to get billed, um, but the cost could exceed sixty-five K. However, our record is usually we're under budget. So I'd want to be sure that we're on a monthly basis or that we're, or that we're locked in for a year because then there's no point in leaving the posting out there if we're going to go with this for a year budget wise. Or something like, I mean, there's a budget. I think we need to approve this because it's a change from what we have.
I think you have to have a motion because it's a change from the way we're doing it.
Yeah.
And I, I would almost put in a, that it is month to month or something.
In the motion?
In the motion.
And then, yeah.
So in, in trying to get ready for the school year, would you, do I need to wait before we can get them until the first?
We can make a motion. We can make a motion. We're at a regular board meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, this is still a discussion item, so.
So what you're, you're proposing is that someone move to accept this proposal on a monthly basis?
On a monthly basis, yeah.
Okay. Someone like to do that?
Well, we should probably put that in.
Well, did I hear Mike say that we should like it locked in for a year or?
No, I, I want to see a technology committee up and running. I think we need a solution now. The school year is going to start. We need somebody to, to help. I mean, Becky can't do everything.
No.
And, you know, and Ascentec is trying to help, but they're, the thing they sent us indicated, we don't do this and this and this, and we need an onsite person to do these things. They've been trying to help out, but they're not going to be helping out and we're going to start a school year.
Yeah, yeah.
So are we asking for, to approve this outfit to be the one that's going to help us? And then we should get a technology committee together?
Yep. It'll be like another motion or discussion.
Well, we don't need a motion for that. We just need, it's just discussion. It's like, let's, let's.
Karen just needs, would like our approval to move forward and get the school year started on good, good foundation.
I don't necessarily want to lock in for a year. I, I like the monthly idea.
Okay. Right. And that's what would be in the motion is on a monthly basis.
I think that was Joe's motion.
I'll move. Do it on a month to month basis. Sixty plus thousand.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand.
Paywork rate. Okay. Have a second?
Second?
Thank you.
Well, I guess the advantage of having it on a monthly basis is that if we find that we're really overrunning the cost, we can relook at it quickly.
Exactly.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Un.
Opposed?
Motion buried.
Signage.
Okay, you saw the, the huge blue thing coming in today, and then that's why I was outside looking at that. Um, it's the eleven by eight. And they had it on that side, but then we walked it over to the other side. And it is huge. It, it's even, it, it is, it's.
Big.
It's big. And I.
Could they redo this and just move it over?
Well, we, we, we could look at it moved over. We looked at it moved over. It's just, I'm not sure. It needs to be eleven feet. I, I guess I don't mind the eight foot high, but the eleven feet wide is just.
Does it have to be solid?
It probably wouldn't need to be as big if you had it off the ground too. You know, you said it was going to sit right on the ground, right?
Well, it, it's on that little like standing.
Above, yeah.
Yeah.
This is cement or what is it made out of?
It's, um.
Probably a little frame on the slab, slab or something.
Did we ever look at like putting a metal sign out, you know, that basically see through?
I, so that, I've thought about that. I wanted this signage of, and I'm glad that we're moving on it. But since the presentation last week and the discussion, I mean, we have this sign and then the lettering over the doors. Main entrance is spelled wrong there, but that's okay. And down by the gymnasium and, and maybe had concerns about that. And, um, and then I asked whether we had signage at the elementary school. And I drove by the elementary school and over the door it says Houston Public Schools. It doesn't say Houston Elementary School. And we have no signage for the preschool. And to me, you know, I don't really want to slow, I do want to slow this down because I think we need some time. We need a design person to come in and maybe look at our bluff and look at our architecture and put together some options for signage for all of our buildings. I knew we talked about put a sign up and say, here's this, but you know, this way to the other, to the elementary school. Um, instead of having one big one, maybe we can get a package deal where we get signage for all our buildings and some really nicely put together design, um, if you have a design person. I mean, there are retired architects. There are people who live in the community that might volunteer their time. Um, the principals and other.
Preschool needs to sign the elementary project.
I, I, I just, yeah, we could tie it, the district together a little bit, the local district. I, personally, I don't like the little logo slots. I, I'd rather have signage. But that's all, that's my two cents. I would, I, I think we need to pull this big project back and make it bigger before we hone in on exactly what we want.
Okay.
That's just one. That's just my opinion. I don't know what you gentlemen are thinking of this.
Well, after seeing the massive thing out there, I am less enthused about it. You know, it, it just is overwhelming. And when on this side it was worse. When I was over there, it kind of blended into the trees more, but, uh.
There's got to be a way to make it tasteful.
I'd like to see it more airy. You know, like you have metallic, uh, lettering and, and so that it looks like it's there, but you can still see that there's other things around it, like the school.
I agree. Go on home, get some ideas.
There isn't a rush on it, is there?
No.
But who did the signage for the town at the entrances east of this?
Oh, boy.
I can't remember.
You know, Brian would be a good person.
Exactly. I mean, I, you know, and we have a great art council. We have people with a good eye for.
Is this local guy down here, does he do that kind of signage, that wild exhibit?
I'm going to plead ignorance.
Well, I thought that, I mean, I thought that the Jamaicans do as well. I mean, there are people who.
They did all the ball field signs. So anything that's up by the ball field, Kevin and Kyle did all of those.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I forgot.
No, that's okay.
But I, I think we need to look at some more options.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
But don't, don't put it, you know, don't put it in a circular folder and keep it coming around.
We'll just fall back on Gary's group then to.
Facilities? Probably. Okay.
Well, signage is something where you could tie all the schools together rather than.
So the direction is to look into options for signage for all buildings within the district and turn it over to facilities? So facilities is in charge of kind of giving the options.
Well, put together a group of, not necessarily specific people, but you know, a, a design person, an architecture person, the principals, people who, I don't know, I think we should have people weigh in on this. It's their community and it's their school. I don't know how to go about that, but that comes before just saying, here are some more sign options.
Yeah, there's nothing too impressive about that one.
No. He didn't tell you what the hillside was above it or behind it. I wouldn't have known that.
And, and this is the same one that he put together for Marilyn from Combiere. What do you mean? Years, uh, she asked him to do sign options and I don't know if those ever.
Who was him by the way?
Craig Breitzbricker from, um, this is from La Crosse Sign Company.
So this is the, what he worked up years ago? This isn't even a new idea?
No.
Okay.
New price.
I'm sure of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you need to get with your administrators and, and get, get a team of people, including maybe facilities committee or representative.
Well, we need to come up with two or three names of people, good creative people that can give us something to look at.
That might be going to volunteer their time.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see them cartonade them all. I'd like to have a lighter looking, I mean, not looking like something that you would use to test drive.
You don't want it looking like an obelisk in the front of the, the school like it's two thousand and one Space Odyssey.
Yeah, exactly.
It'd be interesting to drive by now. You have to drive by schools to see what they're signing.
This kind of looks like one of those walls that you use to test drive cars, you know?
I mean, some of the things that were brought up at the last meeting were how do we, how do we make it clear? This is the high school and this is the main entrance and this is the district office and this is the gymnasium. And, you know, how do we make that? So those kind of, those kind of ideas need to be thought of in, in the group that's putting.
I think a lot of the schools have their signage, have their, what's going on in their events and everything on their signage too. I don't know where we want to go with that, but I just remember.
Kind of like the scroll lighted sign and we've got that over on the jump.
We got that over there, but I just know that a lot of schools do do that.
All right.
Okay.
Strategic planning with the leadership team.
Okay, in, in talking with the principals, um, they're very willing to come and, and give you the, the ten minute presentation on their vision for this year. But they had an idea and, um, I really think it could be incredibly powerful. In January, at our second board meeting at the, so we could have that second board meeting and the conclusion really turn that into retreat time where that can be our kickoff to really looking at the world's best workforce plan. Because by that point, they will have some data going into, okay, these are the goals that we've got for this year. This is how we're doing so far. These are the things that we're really looking at that we'll have to keep working on for next year. And so we really can be in that continuous improvement mode and working together collectively as a board, as a leadership team to be able to go to the district advisory committee and say, this is the work that we've done as far as, this is the direction from the leadership as far as where we want the district to go. And then that district advisory committee can take that and, and, and work out the different goals. But that, in that way, this group can be looking not just at the world's best workforce, which is the academic goals, but also looking at the entire system as far as, as facilities, as far as infrastructure, as far as all those things that go into strategic planning, as far as what resources are needed, where we need to really put the, um, put our time, put our efforts, put, put our money in our people. And really kind of use that January and, and look at that first meeting in January is our organizational meeting to get this group structured. And then you can use that next meeting in January to really say, okay, this is, this is a real heavy lifting for the school. What, what do you think of that? I know it's not what you've done before and it would be saying that we'd have that big retreat every January. And then it would take those check-in times, it, it would take a check-in in May. It would take that other check-in the end of August. And so there would be those, those, the checks and balances throughout the year as we're working through this. But if we're really going to ask the staff to look at continuous improvement, if we're going to ask our kids to try to continue, be continuously improving, I think we need to set the stage and model, this is what continuous improvement did. This is where you really plan it and be proactive and, and dig in and look at the data and really decide where we need to go and how we need to get there. What do you think?
Well, certainly sounds like a good plan to try.
I would, I would still favor, I think, you know, I shouldn't be speaking for board members who aren't here, but I think a ten minute presentation from the principals, we have board members who have said they'd like to hear more from the principals. And so even though it's not the big planning, to just sort of say, you know, what they're setting their sights on as we start the school year is just informational. It's not necessarily part of this. I think this idea has also got a lot of merit. Um, so I'm, I guess do them both.
Okay.
So you're, you're thinking of the, the ten minute presentations for the school year?
Well, like it says, you know, another idea, if you still want a ten minute presentation from each principal about the vision for the upcoming school year, they're willing to come in September and do that.
September, early October.
The strategic plan is just for next year's school year?
Right.
Well, we've already kind of got that set for now.
Right.
So, but this would just be to inform us about what, what, you know, they're looking to do, what's new and different or what the supports in place are.
For the next year.
For this current school year that's starting. And then in January, we'd be planning for the next year. But we'd be planning for the world's best workforce and it would take into account possible budgetary planning. You know, if we're going to do more with technology or do building stuff.
So do you think we should look at next year plus three years old or something like that, or is that too far off?
It's with our world's best workforce plan, we've got it as a five-year plan now. I, I, I don't think we can do the. I, I don't think we can do the year-to-year anymore. It's not doing the best service to our students and our staff.
So we'll come on this, we'll have a plan for our buildings and facility, we'll have a plan for...
And then we work in that. Here's our 10-year plan, what are we, what are we looking at? And so that, that planning time really gets at all of those big picture items and all of those, the, those reportings we need to do as far as the 10-year plan with facilities and with the long-term facility maintenance, and also those things that aren't included in long-term facility maintenance. Are we going to look at building? Are we going to look at, at, you know, doing that? And so we've got, because we should really not think about additions or building without knowing educationally how that's going to impact the kids and where it's needed.
So would you create a, like, numbers of students and all that too would be in there?
You betcha.
Let me add, right, it's everything.
Yep. So we have the projections as far as the class.
Online school too, then.
Right. And then as far as the, what are the extra classes that we have? What are the needs for facilities? Do we have the programs that the kids really need? Are we offering those classes that our kids need to really succeed? Are we meeting our goals as far as making sure that the kids are career and college ready when they graduate? And that's just, we can't just look at them their senior year. To really get a kid ready to be career and college ready, we have to start when they're in preschool. Because that's, that's where we start basically filling that vessel. And it, it takes 13, 14 years to get them to the point where, yes, we're, we're ready to let them leave the nest. And I know this is, it's asking you to do a real paradigm shift, and I get that, but...
Well, I don't think it's, well, I mean, maybe it is, but it's something we've been kind of trying to figure out how to get it going. What do you think, Ron?
Yeah, I, I kind of like the idea of being informed very long notice, so that we kind of know where we're heading before we get to that January meeting.
Right.
One of the things I like about the idea is if we get into the mode of meeting regularly, we don't spend most of our time trying to all get on the same page. Because we've all been part of the process in an ongoing fashion, at least theoretically, ideally. It should work, it could work that way.
And that's what I'm hoping, it works that way. Because the better functioning, the leadership is, that gives support to better functioning in the schools as well. And that's what we're about. So I will talk to the principals about doing 10 minutes. You probably don't want them all the same board meeting, so maybe a couple in the second meeting in September, a couple in the first meeting in October.
Yeah, probably trying to get off to the school year, start the first meeting.
I would, it's, they're all... This last year was a year of a lot of changes. And so that's why I would like the changes for them this year to be just kind of figuring out how to deal with all the changes that got put in place without adding new ones. But... We have to find our new normal.
Okay, long-term facility maintenance updates.
Okay.
How about windows?
Thursday.
Oh, good.
There you go.
I'm trying to remember the schedule, because that's why Chris and I, Chris, Colseth and I were driving around before the start of the meeting. And he finally got a chance to come over. The front windows are slated to start getting installed on Thursday. The, the DCD room, the floor is in today. The trim work should be starting on Thursday, and the final covers over the fin tubes should be taking place the end of this week. Next week is when it's slated to get the other material in there. There's some carpeting that's going to start either tomorrow or Thursday. Cleaning has been done at the elementary school where they can. And some of the carpets are still wet. But that, there's still a lot of things tracking through. The lights are scheduled to be shipped on the 18th, which puts them coming here, they think on the 22nd possibly, maybe not until the 23rd. But as soon as those lights come, Kish said he will be sending 10 guys here, and they can have the lights installed within two days. That's kind of a, a fingers crossed. The, the ceiling in the hallways, the grid is in. We're waiting for the tiles to go in. Those should be here the week of the 29th, so they're hoping that those are in before the kids come. If they're not in before the kids come, it's okay, we can have school with the grid there without the tiles in place. The library is almost entirely done getting painted. The duct work, once it's painted, you don't really even notice it. It really looks very nice. We have, let's see, Rick and Barb can move back into their offices on the 22nd. And...
Thank you.
Your office looks huge. I didn't know it was that big. That probably didn't sound right. We're doing all kinds of research as far as where there was some water damage that was discovered as we were taking things off the walls. And so we're figuring out where that's coming from. There are two main culprits we're going to be fixing both. They think the biggest culprit is the parapets. And to be honest with you, I guess you have to hang over the side of the building to see where these things are, and I haven't, I haven't dilled as of yet to look at them. But they're, they're moving and have been patched once, but definitely need to be patched again. But they're thinking that's why on the east side of the building, there is more seabage than on the west, because the east parapets are moving and the west are, are not. And the lintels need to be caulked as well above windows. One just was on the north side, and since that one was caulked, the, there hasn't been any water running inside the windows. So they know that that's a fix, because we have gotten some big rains since then. For that reason, we can't really paint the whole interior of the classrooms. So it, the mason, the plaster has to dry for a good eight months. But we can really turn it into a learning opportunity as far as having kids research what colors are most conducive to education, or having the kids research what colors were used in buildings in 1939, and then seeing if any of those colors are the same colors, and then getting it down to maybe three from which they can select, so that everybody has, the kids and the teachers have some input, and it's a learning opportunity. And so it's not that, oh, our room isn't painted, but hey, this is, instead of a, instead of a challenge, it's an opportunity. So we can, we can take lemons and make lemonade.
Sweet.
The false flooring in the gym, the plywood that's been put down is slated to come up August 29th, which means that the gym floor will have to be cleaned after that, so we can't really use the elementary gym until the 1st of September. So that does have an impact on back-to-school in-service and meetings.
It's fine.
Okay. Thank you. The cafeteria is slated to be started on Thursday, because they can start moving things back into the library, one part of the library tomorrow, the other part of the library on Thursday, so that they can start getting the cafeteria back and getting the ceiling in. But it takes a little more insulation of some of the new piping going in. They're going to try to do the front of the building, where they had to take out the block to move the air handler in. They're going to be doing that the week of the 29th, because they don't want to have anything where there's noise once kids are back. So anything that's loud will probably be taking place during the in-service week. But, you know, it's, it's, it's not going to be where the kids are there. And so then the fence around the chiller is going in the week of the 29th as well.
Moving along.
Things are coming together rapidly now. But if you've, there were some kids that came into the office and talked about the gym. And with the gym painting and the new lock, the new bleachers in there. And they are giddy. It's just, it is pretty, and we already have one kid that has volunteered to be kind of the gym mother hen as far as, those are street shoes, you're not wearing those on the floor, take your shoes off, put your gym shoes on, come in here. Which, that's kind of what I was hoping would happen, that they would see that, you know, it is really nice and we'd like to keep it that way, but it is...
They're going to reset the bleachers.
They're going to reset the bleachers. They, they're just off-center by about a foot and a half.
It's just enough to be annoying.
Yeah. They're, they're very usable now. What?
How'd that happen?
Stadium Steve does not know how, I don't know his real name, but that's, that's what he goes by. He answered the phone and he said, "Hey, it's Stadium Steve." He's the, the sales guy for the bleacher, bleachers, and he apologized profusely and said he doesn't have a clue how it happened, but that's why he said he's going to make it right for us.
That's that it was, they sent one of their best crews and they just don't know what happened.
And they, they really, the whole floor was covered, so they, they made sure that that floor stayed pristine as they were installing the bleachers.
Well, the brickwork out here sure came out nice. I don't think I've heard more public comments about anything than that.
It's really nice.
When I was going up into cities, I came back and my phone had a bunch of messages as far as the brickwork and the article in the Fillmore County Journal.
Yeah, that was a nice article.
Yeah. So it's...
Even though I wanted a mural the whole way, I liked it the way it came out.
Thank you. And I, and I know that some of you wanted the HHS extruded, but a lot of people have said the extrusion that's there really does look classy.
Yeah, it's nice.
I do want to, it was Deb Sobek and her crew who had done that. I mean, I, you know, I like what we have, but I want to thank her for her efforts and her kids in doing what we asked them, her to do at a time when we were trying to do something.
Right.
And, you know, that is not a small thing to do either.
No, and so...
Hopefully got some good photos of that.
Oh, yeah, we did.
How about the apron?
Apron, Four Seasons is coming tomorrow to put the apron in, and they're going to be doing the metal window wells around the vents. And so that's already been drawn up, and they're going to do a 24-inch apron, because they, UNESCO is looking at what really is necessary to get water away from a building. You need to go at least 24 inches. So if the whole purpose is to maintain runoff, you need to do two feet.
Well, I noticed some of the univents, now some of them have a pipe that comes up this far, gets the water away, and some are broke off and it's just rung out of brick.
Oh, no, it's not, the, those actually can move in and out.
Oh, they're standable.
Oh, they're just pushed in and they need to be pulled out?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because they were moved out when the brickwork was getting done. And so... And, and some of them are not quite level, which is why it's dripping and then coming back toward the building, because they're tipped up a little bit, so it's, it's, they need to be leveled.
That'll be fixed.
Anything else? It's just, there's...
Thanks for the good updates.
Okay, whole business, items for discussion and approval, site crisis plans.
You got the information last time. And I know that there's the updates from Angela went in too, as far as she was just... All that they need to update now are the names and numbers. Did you find something else?
Well, I should have, you know, I didn't look through this stuff when I should have two weeks ago. But I was looking at the, so some of the lists I had a question on, I know for the high school emergency plan. First, so my main, my first question is, why can't our local schools' emergency plans, like, look really similar? They have all the same information, but it's configured a little bit differently. And so I just thought with us trying to bring handbooks together and trying to be unified, that if there was agreement that this is all the right information, can we get agreement in...
Formatting?
In formatting. I know some of the names changed, because if you're at the elementary schools, the personnel is different. If you're at the high school, and, you know, where the first site in a crisis is, is the other building, so it can't be all the same information. But whether you're in one building or the other, you know exactly what page to find what information, because it's there in the same format.
Okay.
I, that was just a thought that I had. There are some names that do need to be put in there, like Laura Yellick for the MNVA. There's no, her name isn't in there yet. We have somebody who resigned, whose name is still in there. And then psychologist, so who is it? Do we have a school psychologist, or do we have a point person to be a school psychologist?
That's through HVAC? Yeah, and HVAC has not given us a name yet, which is why there's a line there.
Okay, so that was...
And as soon as we're given a name, we'll, we'll put it. Danica was our, Danica...
Ashman.
Ashman. Was our school site on-site last year, and she took a job in Wisconsin close to her hometown, so that her mother can babysit more frequently. And then online, Amanda Mabel was not hired back by HVAC, and they have not given us the name of the person that's going to be doing... They've given us the name of a halftime person, but they haven't given us the other halftime person for the MNVA K8 program.
So whenever those are finalized, you could, if the names are not known, at least you could put the principal or some, the HVAC rep and contact the principal or... Because I don't know, these are hard copies, they're in each building, right?
Except we can also...
Quickly change them.
Quickly change one, because we've also got them online.
So, because, and I noticed the high school, one was 30 pages, the elementary school was 34 pages. I think the elementary school had a nice checklist form in there, and that was maybe missing from the other one. Again, just unifying that formatting, that's a possible question. Does it make sense, though? I, it's just my observation, I don't, it just, to me.
And last year, I think what, when we got everybody together last year, it was just to make sure they got all the same parts, because we didn't even have the same parts before.
No, and the parts are same, and I like it that they're alphabetized. I really like that, it's really easy to find your threat.
Right.
Find your threat alphabetically.
Yeah. So the... So that was the first work and so that we can work on unifying them.
Thanks. So you need approval on those with, or do you want to format them and present them again or what is your, what are your wishes?
Well, you can approve them with the stipulation that they get formatted.
Uniformly?
Yes, formatted uniformly.
And then where are those posted? Are they posted online as well?
They're posted online, plus there is a binder in each office. But then really, if you need to find something, it's much easier to go through it online than to go flip through the pages of the binder because you can do a search and it's there.
Make a motion to approve the site crisis plans with unification of the formatting.
Second.
Second, Baron.
If you would just let us know, or have Ann let us know where the link is to those when they're finalized?
Sure.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. How do you want to do the handbooks tonight? Do we do a blanket motion or?
You could.
We can do one. I'll make a motion, well, it doesn't matter. What would you prefer?
Might as well do them all at once rather than just over and over.
Make a motion to approve the handbooks, the Houston High School staff handbook, Houston Elementary staff handbook, Houston Elementary student handbook, and Summit student handbook.
Second. Any discussion?
Second.
My discussion is, when these are finalized, could you let us know where the link to where they are? Because I have been reading, I think the last month, the whole handbook and the changes were in there, but they were two separate documents. And so I just like, not just a page of changes, but the whole handbook. So I just want to know where the whole handbook is, the official current copy.
And it's in SharePoint. So I can, I can give you the link.
Okay, thank you. And that's where the public finds it too?
Staff handbooks typically aren't given to the public. Student handbooks definitely are online through our school today where you can view and download. Staff handbooks are in the internal SharePoint.
So I'd just like to know where the current official version of each handbook is housed.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Local 70 contract.
Jason Bloom from Local 70 in Owentana called last week and said that his group had approved this. Is this what you were typically seeing before? Is that what? I'm trying to figure out what you wanted to see as a group. Is this what you were looking to see as far as the? So there you see that the percent increase with the 40 cent per hour increase if they worked the same number of hours in fiscal 16, in fiscal 17. There's a 30 percent, or 30 cent in, 30 percent, no, 30 cent an hour increase in fiscal 18. And there you see the percent at the bottom. And so that works out to a 4.8 percent.
I don't remember if that's how we've seen it, but I think this makes sense to me, so.
Okay.
Will be approved, huh? Local 70 contract.
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll second it. Ron and.
Michaeline? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It's, it was really very pleasant negotiating that one this year. And it's so nice to have it done before school starts. So there's not going to be the retroactive pay once school starts. Those that are on, all year will get the retroactive, but that's compared to the whole group, a small number.
Okay, policies for second reading.
With this one, I did ask the principals, you'll see that policy 618 and 620 are on this list. And the last time you saw them was in the first meeting in, no, the last, the only, the second meeting in July. So it's been a month since you've had these, but it was, they were pulled off last time so we could really get input from the principals. And the principals, in looking through both, felt that it was probably necessary to have both of them instead of one or the other because they do address different things. So that's a question you had the last time they were there and I wanted to make sure you knew that going forward.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 102, 206, 208, 506, 509, 516, 532, 707. Those, I have, I want to do the other ones.
905.
Okay. You had questions on the other ones? So you're pulling off those three, okay?
Which three? 618, 620, and 905. Can you do the second? Not yet.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So you want to discuss 618, 620, and 905?
Could you pull up 618?
Sure.
There's some not filled in things.
Okay.
Page two, Roman numeral four, there.
Okay.
The who are we, who shall establish, who is going to be the named person, whoever to?
Oh, I'm, for our district, the only thing that really makes sense is a superintendent because we've, we've got both the online and the onsite. And so then it's approved by the school board. So there is a check and a balance there.
Okay, so then that needs to be edited to state the superintendent shall establish.
Okay. That's in Roman numeral four, A.
On page three, I think I just had a question under benchmarks there. So there's a note there about the periodic review cycle. Is that policy 616? Where we have our review cycle?
Yes.
The accountability? So I guess it doesn't matter whether that note's there or not, but we have that, right?
Right, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 618 with that correct modification.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On policy 620, also in Roman numeral four. This was an area that, according to the note there on this policy, section four is the optional section. That's the section? No?
No, it is. But the reason I'm shaking my head, this one came up today. We have a, a student who's now living in this country and was an international student. And in looking at MSBA site, the only policy that MSBA has that provides the governance over assigning transfer credits to credits earned outside of Minnesota, which is international, would actually be section four here.
I understand. I'm not suggesting the section be removed.
Oh, okay.
There are areas that are not completed.
Okay.
If it's number two under letter A, there has to be a number of credits there. This is what the principals were supposed to figure out.
And this would.
And on page three, letter B, again, it's calling for a number of credits. So a determination needs to be made, how many credits are going to be accepted or what.
And I, I think that's already addressed in, I think that's already addressed in, I know, in the high school handbook. I'm not sure if it got addressed in the MNVA's high school handbook.
So if we've approved it in those handbooks, that's fine. I'd just like to see the number in the policy?
Okay, yep, I will. So that's in four, 1B?
Make a motion to approve policy 620 with the insertion of consistent number of credits as listed in the handbooks.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one, 905?
I guess I'm doing this backwards. We should put it on, a motion on the floor and then discuss it. I'm discussing it and then motioning it.
Well.
Well, put your head down.
Okay. So on policy 905, under Roman numeral four again, was the big section, I guess. It's again, looking for, asking for periodic report made to the school board. I don't know if, do we have any revenues that come from advertising as, under this policy?
No.
And so, and then this, I think if you scroll up a little bit, and to Roman numeral three, letter B, was it? Okay, so we've removed in that section on school district property because the scoreboard is going to have a sponsorship on it. Is that part of the reason that's off there? So, because it says, "In no instance will an advertising device be erected or maintained within 100 feet of a school as visible to..." It's not primarily intended to advertise, but that was an issue that came up in discussion because it's a sponsorship, right? We've approved the sponsorship, which is kind of advertising.
Right.
Anyway, I guess I just wanted to ask about whether there is any advertising that goes on either athletic events or other events that we are, you know, that there are revenues or that there's advertising going on that we should be receiving a report on?
Self-drinking machines?
The, that's not really advertising revenue?
No, she's vending revenue.
Yes. Advertising revenue. What would be advertising revenue?
I don't know. The pot machines just go under, vending machine, resale. Maybe they'll pay them, maybe they'll pay us to advertise. We just have to run them.
Okay, so nobody's paying, nobody's paying anything to advertise?
No.
But we have to be sensitive to not let their names, if they're associated with, inconsistent with educational objectives type things?
The Got Milk, we, the Got Milk signs are going up in the gym, but they gave us 3,000 and that's.
See, we get, we get donations now, you know, the scoreboard. But we don't get continuous revenue from it.
Right. It's not, it's not like they're paying us to, to put a banner up and continue like rental space for their advertising.
There isn't any advertising programs, is there?
No. And the, the only advertising that's really done is in the yearbook. But then, once again, that's a one-time thing to offset the cost of the yearbook.
And somebody like the principal is checking that advertising and making sure it's appropriate?
It's not like we're Eden Prairie and have advertising sales all over on our football field.
It's not exactly, I mean, it's, if you need revenue, okay, so if you need revenue, it's a place to go.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve policy 905.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, resolution relating to the election of school board members.
Okay. There, we need to, Marcia sent up at 5 o'clock today, those three names that had been filed prior to the 5 o'clock deadline. And so now it's, you need to pass this resolution, solidifying those three as the names. If anyone else wants to run at this point, it would need to be a write-in campaign. So this is also saying that the election will be, the ballot for these candidates will be on that same general election. And it's the four years and there will be three people who are going to vote. Questions?
So we need a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
I'm just, I'm very happy that we have three people that are, are willing to run and.
Okay.
It's really good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements.
First day of school is viraling at us.
Oh, yeah.
The.
Without it, we wouldn't be here.
Right, absolutely right. We are already planning for the 29th is our all-school, back-to-school in-service where all the employees will be here. Do you need any help, assistance, supplies?
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of work it out and let everybody know.
And board, if you can attend that, the welcome back on the 29th, we're all going to be in the gym, we're not sure. We're going to be in chairs on the floor. If the floor covering comes, we'll be on chairs on the floor. If the floor clubbing doesn't come, we'll be sitting up in the new bleachers because we're not going to put chairs on that floor without a floor covering. But it's.
What kind, what is this floor covering?
It's, it's like a, it's like a floor mat. So it protects the floor.
Covers the whole?
Covers the whole floor.
And where is it stored when you're not covering it?
I guess it, it rolls up into a, a nice neat little, not, can't be that little, but it can be stored away underneath the stage easily.
It can.
That's what they're telling me.
Good, what time does that start for any board members that want to come?
Breakfast starts at 7:45 and then at 8:30, I start talking.
And what time does it wrap up at night?
Let's see, lunch is at, at 12. We've got several different people coming during the, well, not several, a couple of different people coming during the day. And at 2 o'clock, all the different principals can have their own individual people. all the different principals can have their own individual people.
And then? I'm just trying to get an idea of.
Oh, they will be wrapping up. I think the principals are done at 3:30 on, on that Monday with their, with their staff, but then usually the teachers have a union meeting at 3:30 till 4:30, but everybody should be free and clear at 4:30.
Okay, so by 4:30, we should be ready.
Yep.
Weather will be perfect, of course.
Yes, of course.
So if I have some idea, it helps of how many are going to come.
And we're going to do a Google Docs survey, so we have an RSVP, and we'll mail that out.
Very good.
Other than that, Sarah Berger from K-12 will be here on the 23rd in the afternoon. As soon as I get her itinerary and know when she's going to be here, I will let you guys know so that if any of you want to meet with her or have conversations about what's new on the horizon with K-12, she wanted to do that on James Camarato, who is going to be coming. He's our finance person, and he's been having some health issues, so we're not sure if he's going to come in anymore or not.
The online schools committee, have you been informed?
Yes, yes, yes.
Are they officially meeting with her or not? Are they just invited to come, or do you know?
I haven't looked at her itinerary yet, so as soon as I get it, then I can see if we can post for a meeting. So if they would like to meet, I haven't heard a definitive back from anyone on that committee if they wanted to have a, a meeting with her, like an online schools meeting or not.
It's 29th specifically.
Yeah, directly.
And I know he was probably visiting.
Yeah, that's why he's not here tonight.
We're having a thing out at the church on Sunday, so I'm hoping that.
Okay, meeting and committee updates.
I'll bring them to my house, so that'll help. I don't think we.
Well, we had the MSBA, Michaeline and I were up at the MSBA, so if there's, that was kind of a meeting. Michaeline, do you, do you want to?
Well, Crin gave us some information in the update. It was, the title of the meeting or the focus of the meeting was primarily the power of you in the, or framing the equity conversation, the power of you in that conversation. And as Crin said, our, we don't have a lot of diversity in our local schools. We have some in the online schools. And so I thought the keynote speaker, the first, the two keynote speakers had, I thought, very powerful messages for school leaders. And in spite of the fact we're in a local school where we are largely white, that's no excuse for not making diversity a topic that our students are aware of and, you know, and is on our radar. And I don't know how much that's being done, but it, you know, those kinds of things I think are really, really important, and I thought it was very well done. We also got an update from Brenda Casilius on some things. I can't remember right now what she was talking about. There were some other legislative case report Kathy Miller talked about, some of the lawsuit issues, gender bathrooms and things like that.
What we really need to be watching is now that No Child Left Behind has been replaced by ESSA.
Yeah.
ESSA.
Every Student Succeeds.
Right, Every Student Succeeds Act, that they're wading through the language as far as what was written and how it's being interpreted, as far as how we are going to comply with some of that language. And it, it could have some definite repercussions on what we do and how we do things. So we will be watching that, and we're going to, as a state, apply for the waiver to some of the requirements right away because as we found out with the other waiver with No Child Left Behind, the people that apply first tend to get it, and then they realize those things that kind of slip through the cracks, so then the next wave doesn't get it at all. And so we want to be in the first wave, so.
And she's kind of leading that charge.
Definitely leading the charge.
So.
And then I went to the back-to-school conference, MDE slash MASA. The, some of what I got from the keynote speaker, the first day of that conference, I'm going to be using in the back-to-school. It's, it's all about coherence and making sure that everything is working together and unified. And I really felt that it was speaking to everything we're trying to do here. Second day, I wish I would have gotten as much out of the keynote speaker, but his whole kind of catchphrase was fail rapidly. And I, I was having problems embracing that sentiment. And, and I get what he's talking about is, you know, try something. It's, it's better to try something and fail than to not try anything at all. But I would like to, you know.
Was he saying recognize failure rapidly?
Yes, yeah.
So not don't try, but just, I mean, he's not saying don't try, but.
Right, no, he's saying definitely get out there and try, and then if you're trying something and you know it doesn't work, stop doing it and, and change. And so it's, that's what he was kind of going for, and I get that as far as if, if, if what you're doing isn't working at all, don't say, well, this was our initiative for the year. We're going to keep doing something that's not working. I get that. It's a, it's a good idea. However, as a motto, I would much rather look at leading and learning than fail rapidly than.
Sounds a little more upbeat.
Yeah, I, I, leading and learning is a little more positive. I like that better. But it was, it was a very good conference, very good. The breakout sessions, the one with Tom Melcher, yeah, there's all kinds of changes coming with finance. And they're not quite sure yet because they think that since Dowd won the primary, they were hoping that there would be the special session. So they said that the special session was being held unless Dowd didn't win his primary. So he won, so now I've been waiting to see about special sessions.
Any other comments, feedback? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you so much.
Has anybody talked to Brian Forsythe about the sign situation?
No, that's, that's a good idea. I will give him a call. It is a very good idea.
Man, if anybody could pull it together, he'd.
Oh, yeah, he, he would definitely have ideas. Except. You know, as long as he knows that it can't look like a 1960s bus, I think we're fine.
I'm thinking.
Well, you think, and I'll give you a picture.
Aren't they cute?
Yes.
We were doing.
Nothing but trouble, those three.
You wrote a little note to Kevin?
Okay.